Good afternoon. Today is Wednesday, August 7th, 2024. It is 4:00 PM. There's a motion to call the meeting to order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of minutes for approval. We have July 9th, 2024, regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Next one, we have a Class II used car dealer license. Review of matter presented. Votes may be taken. Is that you, sir?
Yes.
If you'd like to introduce yourself and give us an idea of what you're proposing here.
Hi. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is John Tavares. I'm the current owner of Miami Heat Discount Fuel. I'm applying for a Class II license for a used car dealership at 62 South Main Street, across from the scene center. I've provided the best I could as far as the proposal, where I could put the, maybe be able to put six cars there for sale. Not looking for anything extravagant. I'm just looking for something to help income as far as, help sustain the property. That's pretty much anything that would, that could be done. I do appreciate it.
So first thing right off the rip, before we even dig in too far, I believe there's a lot more information that our building department requires for this. Like an actual full site plan, charity bonds, workers' compensation. You also have to legally state where repairs would be done for warranty purposes. If you don't have your own garage, you'd have to be a licensed repair facility. You'd have to have an actual issued, notarized statement from a repair facility saying they're going to work on your vehicles. So there's definitely a lot of information that we need to even consider any of this in general. And then there was also some non-conforming use restrictions in town that may hinder it entirely, if I'm not mistaken. Gentlemen, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
The other part of the problem was on the Mass General Law, Chapter, Section 140, Subsection 59, is it supposed to be your principal place of business? So I don't know how you have a principal place of business when you already have multiple businesses on your property. So you have Miami Heat, you have a wheel polishing company out front, which by the way, does fantastic work.
Thank you.
So I don't know how we would be able to get around just having it as a principal place of business, right, under the statute of law. So it's going to be your primary business, which I know it's not because you operate in two other businesses already on the grounds. That's, that's one of your biggest issues, right? So as Mr. Chairman has spoken to, is proof of a bond of equivalent collateral in the amount of $25,000, proof that a 30-day cancellation notice will be sent to the town in the event of the bond's cancellation, a notarized certification or other form of documentation regarding the dealer's access to sufficient warranty, repair obligations, proof that the used car dealership will be the applicant's principal business, proof that the applicant has available space, place of business is suitable for the principal business, which may include a description of the premises along with a copy of the lease deed, any other information that would assist the licensing authority in ensuring that the dealer is performing the statutory obligations pursuant to General Law 140, Subsection 59. There's a lot of things that go along with it. There's that, all of that, which I don't think is, you could actually get around. And then there's also the problem is our zoning doesn't allow used car dealerships anymore in the town of Akushnet. So that's, first and foremost, that's a dead issue, right? So if it's not an allowed use in any district anymore, there's nothing that we can do. And it's not an allowed use, as far as I'm aware of, in any district anymore. I think that was dissolved decades ago.
So they're not, they're just one allowed for me to have?
It's not an allowed use. So we can't, no matter what we, we, if we wanted to, we couldn't do it because it's no longer an allowed use, right? So if it was an allowed use and you weren't in the right district, you could go to the Special Permit Granted Authority, which would be Zoning Board of Appeals, go in front of them and say, "It's an allowed use in, in the business district." I'm in, let's just call you in a resident, I know you have a business village, but residential district. And they say, "Well, it's an allowed use somewhere." The Zoning Board of Appeals wouldn't be able to give you that variance. The problem with that now comes is the town of Akushnet no longer allows what they call a use variance. So you can't even do that anymore either. So it's just kind of like killed.
Dead in the water.
It is. Unfortunately, our bylaws prohibit use variances, right? That's been demolished again decades ago, right? So it's just, it's not an allowed use anymore in the town of Akushnet, right? And we don't allow use variances, which you would have to have.
And a kind of getting handcuffed at that point.
And it's just, all the criteria. I mean, I've done a bunch of homework. I used to be in the business, right? Auto repair and stuff like that, right? And it was just almost impossible for me to get my used car license. So what I did, and I would recommend to you, is try to find somebody who has a used car license. If you're that adamant about selling cars, you won't be able to do it on your property. But you could always try to barter a deal with somebody else that has a used car license. And you can buy and sell cars through that individual, right? And you give them a small cop.
All right. I mean, it's kind of to the side of a question, but as far as a repair, about a garage, like if I wanted to expand the garage a little bit, is that the same law for that as well?
For what kind of garage?
Like if I wanted to, the garage that I'm working out of there now, if I wanted to expand and make it bigger, would that, is that the same?
No, that's totally separate. So this, this is just about what kind of business you want, right? And it's not allowed, a used car lot's not allowed anymore, right? So if you want to, if you want to expand your garage from a 40 by 60 to a 40 by 80, again, you would have to go see the building commissioner and see if it's in his purview as long as you have the right setbacks inside, you have setbacks and things of the like, right? And then there's coverage of impervious surface and all that, will bore you with all that. But you go see the building inspector, and if he denies your building permit, then you would have to go to Zoning Board of Appeals. You pay like 300 bucks, I think, to go in front of Zoning Board of Appeals, and you ask for a variance for that. Because you're varying from the specifications within the bylaw. So you would need a variance.
Very good. Every time you time.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we'll take a motion to... Actually, I can't. I mean, this motion would deny at this point, right?
Motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, that time of the year again, one-day liquor license for the Apple Peach Festival for the Lions Club. Gentlemen, we do this every year. They will require a one-day liquor license to be issued for both days of the Apple Peach Festival. We got their application on file. It's been signed off by the police chief, the fire chief, and the building inspector.
I make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for September 7th, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and September 8th, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor? Next item, this is just a little bit of an announcement. Basically, we are currently looking for people to volunteer for the finance committee, specifically our precinct one. But we will gladly take any letters of interest, period. Finance committee, as you know, is probably one of the most important committees in this town. They are the backbone, and they help us do our jobs as best as we can. So if anybody's interested in sending a letter of interest to the finance, to be on the finance committee, preference to precinct one, please send it to the Board of Selectmen's office. If you don't know what your precinct is, you can reach out to the town clerk with your address, and they can tell you what precinct you're in. And then next up, golf committee. We have Mr. Tibbles here. We'll start by also mentioning that there is a golf committee vacancy as well. A position was held by a finance committee member in the past. So I would ask Mr. Kelly, reach out to any FinCom members to see if they're interested, but also anybody else in the public that has interest in serving on the golf committee, also send letters of interest to the Board of Selectmen. The more involvement we get, the better decisions we can make. Thank you.
The finance committee, Mr. Ferrara's been doing it. Rest in peace, Mr. Ferrara. But he was only on the golf committee for advisory capacity, right? So a finance member can't be on any other board or committee unless it's for advisory capacity. So it really, you know, it's kind of like being a liaison. Although the finance committee always has liaisons, like Old Colony Budget Committee, you know, school committee, the golf committee. So if we, if we have an interested candidate for golf committee out there with some knowledge of golf and things like that that can actually help out, that would be great.
Next up, we have appointment of second assistant to the golf superintendent. What's this?
I don't have anything on that.
This will be, just got here. Mr. Tibbles, if you don't mind, can you just let me know, is this a, just a replacement of a position that was already filled?
Yes, this is a replacement of a position that we had filled up until, I believe it was December, where the individual had a position left for a job to fund the construction. So it's not a new position. It was an existing position. It has remained vacant.
Do you have a candidate in mind, or you're just looking at?
Yes.
Oh, you're difficult.
No, I have someone in mind.
Actually, I just got this today, then.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Steve, can you tell me where in the budget we funded that position? Because I've looked back a decade. And we have the assistant superintendent broken out. You are obviously broken out. You know, the other key positions.
Well, the second assistant falls within, within the range of, I think, what they term in the budget, golf, what do they call golf maintenance?
Maintenance employees?
Employees, yes.
So you're telling, you're saying to the board that that, whatever the, it's kind of hard to do this because I don't know what the salary is, right? So whatever that salary means?
Well, it's, it's, that's an hourly wage position. And if you remember back in January, actually on the 18th of January, if my notes are correct, there was an approval of a salary range. And the second assistant falls within a $20 to $24 an hour range.
So that's, you're telling me, Steve, that it's been, always been anticipated and that salary range is being carried in maintenance employees in that line item?
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't the same salary range initially.
No, I understand that.
But it's been carried in that line.
The position's covered in that maintenance position. So you're, you're, I'm going to use a lack of better terms is, you have $300,000 and $2,000 inside that line item.
Yes.
It falls within that $300,000 and $2,000 salary range. You have that capacity to do?
Within that, within that range or within that budget for FY '25, I have the capacity to employ that position.
And I do know, gentlemen, that there was a second assistant superintendent in prior years. And this individual, I think, has some pretty good experience and past experience.
Yes, he has a range of, the individual being considered has a range of experience, not specifically in golf course maintenance as it pertains to turf management. But he does have experience in landscaping work. He has experience in equipment operation, large equipment operation. He does possess a hoisting license. And from speaking with that person, I think, excuse me, I think it's, you know, capable for us to train him on our particular types of equipment and then be able to use his skills, other skills in equipment operation and excavating and so forth to help us with some small projects that we undertake or to, you know, to address issues that we come across, you know, in our daily operations outside the scope of the equipment that we normally use.
And this, is this a recommendation from the golf committee as well?
Yes.
They voted in favor of the position?
Well, the golf, the, well, the position itself had existed. The individual went through the subcommittee, and the subcommittee approved. And I believe that, I don't know if the subcommittee contacted yourself, Mr. Kelly, or not, but in the meeting that I had with them, I presented the information you had before you. We had, we had a discussion. And then I was contacted. I was basically approved. At that point, I was contacted next day, said they, you know, that we could move forward in that regard, so.
References checked out? Everything?
Yes, I called, excuse me, I called the reference. Reference, and I, my basic concern with the references was the individual, a decent employee? Did he show up on time? Do you have any particular issues with that person? And the folks that I contacted didn't have any, any such issues. Said he did a good job working for them while, you know, while he was still, while he was employed under their supervision. Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Kelly?
The title? It's really a management title. And you're saying he's an hourly employee?
Yeah. Well, we're all, you know, even though myself and Kevin are listed as, you know, supervisory personnel, when you look at our, the way in which our pay is handled, it doesn't mention anything.
Well, that's the Harper system, but...
Oh, that's just the system.
You're an exempt employee.
Yes.
You're management. And this person is not, you're saying he's hourly?
Technically, no, not technically at this point, no. First of all, he's got a, he would have, he wish he would have a six-month probationary period prior to that. And in the event that, you know, he was able to assume additional responsibilities, he might be given one or two people under which he would be conducting a project or something, you know, where, for instance, you know, cutting new edges on bunkers. You know, he would be assigned two people to help do that physical work, but he'd be the primary person.
So in effect, he's a foreman?
You could say that, yes.
Yes, Mr. Kelly?
I would, obviously, they need him. Obviously, he's an hourly employee according to the description. I would like, I have problems with the title, superintendent.
Well, it's listed as second assistant to the golf superintendent.
Yeah. Well, you could say second assistant in training. You could say assistant in training.
You can just say second assistant.
The reason, well, the reason I use that nomenclature is because that's what's normally accepted in the business.
Yeah. Okay. Understood.
We just went through that with the first assistant.
I know where you're going with it. I'm just, I'm not going to advertise it.
So I would say...
You want to hold the appointment for two weeks?
Or, or just, is there a problem with calling him another title like foreman?
No. Again, I used second assistant, one, because it's nomenclature of the business. So it's foreman. But also because second assistant was a position that already existed.
In existence.
So you can call him a lead person, whatever you want to call him, right?
Lead, uh, lead foreman.
Whatever you, just a lead person. Just that arriving title so they could?
Yeah.
Take it, so, whatever. Lead maintenance employee.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to appoint?
That's what we're calling a lead maintenance employee.
There you go. Is there a motion to appoint Nathan Dinucci as lead maintenance employee?
So?
Second. All those in favor? So now, Mr. Tibbles will move on to a 60-page document. I want to give us some background on the RFP for the bunker repairs.
Yes, we were, actually, we've been going, looking into this, oh, probably for about four, five, six months now. Initiating, initiating the process of what particular bunkers we thought would need to be repaired for creating a priority list, putting those particular bunkers on the priority list. What that document in front of you is, is the format through which the bunkers are going to be reconstructed, specifying the approach, materials, and other portions of the work as far as timing is concerned and so on, and approval of particular stages. We have, as you well know, the golf courses in the neighborhood 27 years old. And bunkers are usually replaced or repaired anywhere from 12 to 20 years, especially in the public golfing circumstance where you have significantly greater number of rounds. So we looked at the list, a list, and we prioritized a rights, one bunker on the seventh hole, two on the 10th, one on the third, and one on the sixth. And what we did is sat down with the architect to get some conceptual ideas of redesigning the bunkers. One of the important things about, not only did the bunker work, but also any other type of golf course change or improvement or renovation is that it has to meld or fit in with what's existing there. So what you really need is someone, you know, you need a golf course shaper who can take that shape. And what you want to do and fix it or make it fit into what you already have, but also significantly being aware of equipment, how equipment operates, the slopes on which equipment can operate safely. And you also have to take into consideration that you have people out there playing golf. And you just can't put something in that has an improper slope or an improper design because if someone were to become injured or a piece of equipment were to malfunction because of that design, you're going to have an issue on your hands. So what we do is we speak with the architect. The architect gives us, takes our ideas, puts them down on paper, looks at the slopes, looks at the angles, presents something, look at it and say, "Okay, well, that's what we, we'd like to have, or that looks what fits the picture." We're considering things such as stopping, stoping washouts in the bunkers from significant rain which contaminates the soil, but also making them more playable for our, you know, the level, range and level of golfers that we have there. So that's what that document does. It does that to be thorough. So when we can, you know, when we present that to someone, they're going to come back with us and they're going to give us their estimate of cost to do that job. And really, in as far as golf course shaping and golf course construction, it's not like, you know, building, building where you're going to have, you know, 25, 30 people maybe look at it. There's only probably six or seven, maybe eight qualified companies in the Northeast, you know, unless you want to go outside to Florida, California. I don't think you really want to go.
No, no paying for travel, which is...
So, but that's why it was put together. Then the, we had, Mr. Kelly took a look at the specifications. And then, you know, the document as a whole made some suggestions for changes. The changes went back. And I, you know, Tim Garish, who's our architect, who is actually one of the original architects of the original architectural team that did the golf course work initially, which I thought would be good because he would be able to blend what we're asking for into what was initially done. He's also helped us with some other projects on the course. And he's also a, the architect chosen by the National Golf Foundation to contribute to the report that they produce for the golf committee.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Kelly, yes?
The town administrator's office looked at the document as to form to comply with the procurement law. We have no real knowledge about anything with golf course design.
So what's, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Casper.
I know there's been some debate back and forth between some of your committee members on whatever this document's doing for bunker fixing, we'll call it. And there's some people that are concerned about the high cost of, I think it's penetrating concrete versus liner bunkers. And some people want the expensive twenty thousand dollar bunker replacement, which is getting out of control versus whatever the other one is, is half the cost and that one lasts twenty years and whatever. I've just heard a bunch of wrong answers.
Well, the question you're referring to is the lining of the bunkers, which most, if not all, construction folks will do in some fashion when they re, whether they're redesigning or rebuilding. The reason for the liner, especially in our neck of the woods, I mean, you know, let's face it, New England soil is rocky. Freeze thaw, rocks push up from beneath, contaminate the soil, and people don't really like to hit rocks off the golf clubs. Second reason for it is if you use the proper, proper insulation, using the proper material, you can alleviate some of those, the washing out on the embankments of the bunkers by preventing the sand from going down. One of the best products out there on the market is a material called capillary concrete. Basically what it is, it's a proprietary mix of concrete that's applied by, can be applied by probably two or three, in our area, maybe two different contractors. What it does is it puts a thin sheet approximately the height of a hockey puck, maybe a little bit higher on the base of the bunker. Water penetrates through that, goes into the drainage system that's designed in the bunker and exits in the proper location. You can have what they call a flashed face, a little bit higher with the capillary concrete if you don't have some type of liner similar to the capillary concrete under the flashed face. As soon as it rains, all your sand's in the bottom of the bunker, and it takes a significant amount of effort and time to replace. Once the soil gets into the sand, it contaminates it, the sand gets hard, it doesn't play appropriately. So the other thing about capillary concrete, I looked at, you know, I asked about capillary concrete. We have one bunker that has capillary concrete in it already, and it's one of the few, if not the only bunker on the bloody golf course. It doesn't wash out when it gets a one to two inch rainstorm. Yes, it is a little expensive compared to some of the other liners, not significantly so, but if you want to have a bunker that's going to last longer, drain properly, not wash out, you're going to have to put some type of liner in it. Doing the old school way of just packing the bottom with clay isn't going to necessarily work because the clay itself absorbs moisture and sits there and stays wet, doesn't drain properly, so you can't cover the drainage in a bunker with clay because it's not going to go through into the drain tile. So you have to leave the drain tile open, which can cause you some additional problems as well as the sand settling into the drain tile and possibly clogging it up, so.
Sure. So the question is, thanks for that lesson. The question, the question is, is that inside this bid spec, are we getting options when they do, this guy comes in and designs?
What they can do, they can, they can quote, make their quote on capillary concrete or an appropriate substitute of equal or greater quality that can be approved by golf committee architect or what have you.
Ultimately, it's Board of Selectment for, because it's a, it's a reserve funding that's going to be an article funding that's going to fund this, right?
Well, I would assume so, yes, although our current article in place has approximately one hundred, one thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars left.
That needs Board of Selectment approval.
That needs approval.
So that's what I'm trying to say is I'd like to see an option in this bid spec if it's not there, I'd like to add that in there where there's something in the bid spec that gives you options of these liners so that we have options, right? We don't want to just go with the fifty thousand dollar bunker replacement if the other one's just as good or almost as good for half the cost, right? That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know.
Without pebbles speech.
We, that could be put in there, I believe it's already in there, but I'll check it to make sure. As I mentioned to the golf committee, I mean, you know, the days of five to six to seven and eight thousand dollar bunkers, the twelve thousand dollar bunkers is gone, especially when you have to be quoting at prevailing wage. If I wasn't prevailing wage, I mean, right now, I mean, if you go down the street five or six miles, the country club of New Bedford can put in a bunker probably for about ten to twelve grand less than I can, or we can in town, simply because you're not quoting prevailing wage. But that's our current situation based on the cost per bunker. So I need, you know, you're probably looking anywhere in the neighborhood of, I'd say, you know, fifteen to, you know, fifteen to twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars possibly a bunker depending on the amount of earthwork and so on. So it's not, you know, it's not an inexpensive proposition, but.
Cheaper to put in a pool, like pools.
Yeah. Well, see, that's the problem. Again, it's not so much the materials you're using, it's the fact that we're bound by prevailing wage.
So can we hire?
Excuse me?
Could we, so how long will a project like this take place?
You know, the other thing about the project is too, the contractors required to do from A, you know, from A to Z. And the question that I often get is, well, can't you hire somebody and you guys do the rest? Well, with the exception of Kevin Perkins, after the twenty-eighth of August, you're looking at the youngest guy on the crew after the twenty-eighth of August when our high school students go, go back.
So why don't we?
No, we can't, we are golf course maintenance personnel, we are not golf course.
What we could do to beat their prevailing wages, we'll just lease the golf course from the month of November to April to Dave Warner Enterprises, and then he'll hire us.
I don't know, whatever, whatever works, you know, all I'm interested in doing is getting a few of these terrible bunkers fixed so golfers can see us make some progress but enjoy the course even more.
We need to figure out what, you know, the finances, right? We don't just appropriate money and get money appropriated, just go out and spend a ton of money and blow all the reserves, right? We got to be, keep a careful eye on reserves, right? There was some plan a few years ago, it was just, in two thousand twenty-eight, we're going to have nothing left in reserve. That's not happening, right? Buying equipment, fixing bunkers, there's things that we need to do, the things that we need to do, what we have to do to take care of the course so that we can keep making money, right? And by the way, I've been out on the golf course, not golfing, but looking at the bridges, trying to help you out with that situation, Steve. And I can tell you this, that the golf course is always extremely busy, and I've gotten a lot of people that is extremely satisfied by your work and the maintenance staff's work. That's the, the way the golf course is being taken care of and the condition of the golf course, excellent job.
Oh, thank you.
So I just wanted to say that, but I just, I.
Well, I've got.
We've got to be careful with the money thing, right?
Right, well, you know, it's, you know, you were basically getting old and, you know, and.
We're not getting any of it.
Things are wearing out. And if we want to maintain that volume and attract new people, we have to make those things appeasing to the people who are coming.
Do we need to, like, once we get through this or figure this out, can we develop a schedule so like every year there's a bunker being repaired or, you know, so it's just not?
Well, I've discussed it with the golf committee numerous times, we need to have that type of plan in effect because things wear out. And not only that, but we also have to understand, you know, teeing spaces is too small in some respects, not large enough in others. These are not, you know, these are, if we have a planned approach to these projects, then we won't, you know, it's kind of referred to be, you know, just, you know, pulling in money out of the air because we want to do this, that, and the other thing.
I agree with Selectman Warner, I mean, I tell you, I was going to actually say that. We need, we need to come up with a plan, as Mr. Warner just alluded to, is, you know, maybe we do get on a plan where we do two a year, right? Maybe it's one a year, depending on the cost, but let's not commit ourselves to doing all four of them in this plan, right? Let's figure it out what it's going to be.
Well, that's the idea, I mean, the, you know, the bunker on the third hole is basically a disaster, there's not much I can do with. I don't have the equipment to do it. And, you know, the slopes, because they're so old, on the tenth hole have worn out, and in order to get in there and change, I mean, these are, you know, the committee asked me the same thing, well, do we have to do all four, do we have to do all six? I don't think, well, there's one, two, three, four, five, yeah, there were six total. I said, you don't have to do all of them, but that's up to you, and you're not going to find out whether you can afford to do all of them or not until you put this out there and get responses back from people about what it's going to cost.
There you go.
Is, in this document, is there a provision where they have to do all of them, or will have the opportunity?
Well, they're supposed to quote all of them.
Okay. Are they going to, if it's not in here, if it's a possibility to just do the problematic ones, depending on cost, obviously, I just want it out just in case, because I don't want you to go through all the work of getting an RFP, finding a good quote, we like the price, but then they say, sorry, we have to do every single bunker on your golf course, this is the price, take it or leave it.
Well, every single bunker in the plan.
Correct.
You do every one of them one time.
Yeah, either way, but I mean, if it comes out.
Yeah, we ain't coming.
We don't know what, we can't commit to a total reclamation project without seeing price first, but I would like the option to say, okay, well, we can't swing all six of these right now, but we can do three of them. I'd like to have that out just in case, not necessarily saying that's the case. If it comes in at the right price and it looks feasible to do six?
Well, I can ask, you know, I can, one of the things that I can do in that respect is ask that we change the document somewhat to have them give us a particular price per hole and then a total price overall.
Yeah, if that's possible, I think that would be helpful, more helpful for us to digest it and just make sure, I mean, we're really, really focusing on proper financial due diligence, and we want to make sure that every decision we make benefits ultimately.
Contrary to popular belief, I don't like to waste money in that norm.
I know you don't.
Really? So it's the same, it's the same, it's the same thing as everything else in business, right? If you go out and you buy two things, it's going to be X dollars, you buy six things, the price comes down, right? You buy a hundred things, the price comes down into the bulk price, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, we got to look at it, and the price is going to change a little bit, but again, we don't know what the price is, so we would never commit to doing four or six when we say, hold back, it's twenty-five a pop, we're doing two, have a nice day.
Well, that's why, that's why we need to get, that's why we need to have all these things in place, because, you know, the committee said, well, why don't you get us a price? And I can't just call up, you know, contractor Z and say, come on over and give me a price on this.
You're not going to have to buy a couple bags of sand and?
Well, that's the thing, he's not going, you know, he's going to ask a series of questions that I'm not going to have, you know, the answer to in that particular, I'll have the answer in that particular circumstance, but what I need to do is give him a sheet, say, okay, if you, here's, here's all the questions that you might want to ask, materials, labor, you're responsible for everything. I'm responsible for moving, for instance, moving irrigation or something like that. You're responsible for everything else. You hit a pipe, you have to fix it.
Yep.
You know, you're responsible for cleaning up when you pull out, so on and so forth. So that way they know, soup the nuts, and then they may ask questions, you know, off of that to make sure they're clear. But, I mean, you know, two or three of the guys, I can think, have been doing this for forty years plus, so they come in pretty, you know, pretty square. And one of them has extensive experience doing, you know, projects for municipal courses.
Okay.
So, but hopefully we can get that, you know, I can talk to Tim, look at these other, these ideas that you presented and have them included and see if we can get an updated, you know, document back.
Perfect.
That shouldn't be a difficult thing to get done, I mean, he can, again, he's quite experienced in doing this, and, you know, a few, a few changes here and there, and he'll be ready to have it right back out.
Excellent.
Just try to get the RFP right, right? Where we're, we're not coming to all six, if that's what you have in here to quote, do six, that we have the option to do two, four, or six, right? And you want to make sure that we have that option because the last thing we want is to do all this RFP, have these people spend their time doing it, comes back to us, and it's two hundred grand, and we say, forget it, we ain't doing any of them, right? We want to be able to have the option to choose, option A, option B, option C, and we'll go from there, depending on cost. I think you heard that pretty loud and clear.
Yeah, I'll sit down with Tim.
That's what we want, right? It's option A, option B, option C, pricing accordingly, two, four, six, right? However they want to do it.
Yeah. Because, as you said, I mean, you have mobilization costs and stuff, once you start breaking it down, there's change.
Thanks, Steve.
Sure. No problem.
All right. So at this moment, no action taken on that, we'll just wait for the RFP to come back, send it over to Mr. Kelly.
Yeah.
Take a look, and then we'll bring it back up.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Keep up the good work out there, Steve.
Thank you. All right. Town election warrant approval. This is Sam. Looks like this is an announcement from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts from William Francis Galvin, the Secretary of the Commonwealth. Mr. Kelly, I got to read all this?
Yup.
Senator in Congress.
It's for the primary election.
Okay. For the primary election, okay. To either of the constables of the town of Acushnet, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at precinct one, Acushnet Elementary School, eight hundred Middle Road, precinct two A, Acushnet Elementary School, eight hundred Middle Road, precinct two, Acushnet Elementary School, eight hundred Middle Road, precinct three, Acushnet Elementary School, eight hundred Middle Road. Primaries on Tuesday, the third day of September two thousand twenty-four, from seven AM to eight PM for the following purpose, to cast their votes in the state primary election for the candidates for the following offices. Representative in Congress for the ninth district.
Senator in Congress.
I'm reading, well, it says representative in Congress.
The first one.
Oh, I missed it. All right, well, senator in Congress for this Commonwealth, all precincts, representative in Congress, ninth district, one, two A, two and three, counselor, first district, precincts one, two A, two and three, senator in general court, second Bristol and Plymouth district, precincts one, two A, two and three, representative in general court, tenth Bristol district, one and two A, representative in general court for the eighth Bristol district, two and three, clerk of courts, Bristol County, precincts one, two A, two and three, register of deeds, Bristol County, one, two A, two and three, county commissioner, Bristol County, precincts one, two A, two and three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sorry, I missed that one, Mr. Kelly. Ran a little too fast. All right, we are going to go into a couple of executive sessions before we resume our open session. We have two. First one's executive session under Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A three, to conduct, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Police personnel, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the governmental body, and the board will return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session, an executive session under Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct bargaining sessions of contract negotiations with non-union personnel, i.e. police and interim police chief. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the governmental body, and the board will return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
So moved. Second.
We'll call vote, Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
I am a yes. We are in executive session. Motion to return to public session.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Could I have a roll call?
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We're in public session. We are going to skip over the whole agenda number five and move right to the DPW. Perfect time. Kathy or Dan?
Hello.
Nice to see you both.
Nice to see all of you.
Kathy, I know you look forward to this every year.
My favorite time of the year. So unfortunately, we have talked about water and sewer rates. And the good news?
Always state the good news.
Good news is that New Bedford is going to increase, well, this isn't the news, the Bedford's increasing their rates, twenty-two cents, four point three percent. The DPW is going to recommend only increasing our rates by eleven cents. So if you look at the, do you all have the analysis I gave? Okay. So what I did was I took what we have as the FY twenty-five budget and then the usage we expect to buy from New Bedford, take that, and then we come up with our estimated billing income, our budget, which we have to cover, less the reserve, the sixty thousand, because we try not to use that. So then your extra surplus is only going to be eight thousand four forty-nine. That's really not enough of a buffer to have in the account, so we obviously have to increase the rates. I gave you two choices, I gave the twenty-two cents and I gave the eleven cents. The DPW fills out with the eleven cents, you're going to estimate an increase of about thirty-two thousand. I feel comfortable with that this year, I'm estimating the town accountant will probably tell you you're adding about thirty-five or forty. She hasn't completed all her analysis yet, but I tried to go through what I know we did to come up with what we're going to add. So I think we're definitely going to add this year, which is good, but based on the increase in New Bedford's costs and the increase in our budget, we have to increase the rates.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Yeah, I sat down with Kathy and Dan, like I do every year, right? It's, we built, we spent the last decade since town meeting turned over the BBW to the Board of Selectmen, and we've done an excellent job at building surplus, but we're at a good threshold for the surplus that we don't need to build an exorbitant amount of surplus, right? It hurt the rate payers, and we've done a good job keeping the rate down. We're trying to get to a point where we can just stay even with the city of New Bedford, whatever their rate increase is. Obviously, this year, we feel that we could just do half of that rate increase, which I'm ecstatic about, but, you know, we got to keep that in mind, that we have a lot of other things that we need to be doing for water infrastructure, right? So we're comfortable now, but we got to keep an eye on it, and I'm, I'm fine with the eleven cents, which is fifty percent of what the city of New Bedford is, hit us on, right? I think it's important to note that the city of New Bedford has gone wild in the last six, seven years with rate increases, both water and sewer. So it is, it is troubling, but that and fixed costs, right? So the only other thing that we can do to keep rates down and not go up on rates in any calendar year is look at our fixed costs, right? Because the difference between the city of New Bedford's water rate, the town of Acushnet's water rate is just a good amount that's there, it's due to fixed costs that we have in our budget. And I've had some dialogue with Kathy about the structure of our water sewer department with our manpower versus DBW manpower, right? And I think that we need to take a good look at that this budget season because we're not utilizing our water and sewer guys to claim that whole salary in water and sewer because we're using a larger percentage of their time in highway work, right? So I think we need to look at that shift and maybe take some of that salary and shift it over to DBW, because it's not fair that we're charging water and sewer the full salary and we're using them in DBW, and it's, it's not anybody's fault, it's just the structure of what we have, right? So we have four employees in water and sewer, and we have five in DBW. Does that make any sense? Like, how does that make any sense, right? Your DBW's doing the whole town, right? And your water and sewer's doing a lot of water, but a fraction, but they're not always doing anything really in water or particularly anything really in sewer, but yet we're claiming that whole salary.
Yep.
And that affects rates, right?
Yep.
So I think we need to look at that over the budget season coming up, have a little conversation on salaries and how we diversify that a little bit better, and that'll, and that'll help rate payers.
Sure.
I agree. The only thing is, when they do work overtime, we do make sure, I make sure that they get charged back to whatever the overtime is for. So if it was, the water main breakers last night, all of them will be charged to water if they're doing something on the road, highway, they will be charged there, but they're, like Mr. Gasper was saying, during the day, I mean, regular hours, they're all being paid out of just their own budgets.
There's really one employee that we utilize, I'll say ninety percent of that individual's time, is Mr. Abrams, right? Because he's a water meter replacer, right? So his salary, ninety percent of his salary, he needs to stay in the water because that's really his job, his meter replacements, right? And he does a great job at that, so we got to look at that structure and maybe do a little fat angling this year around, but I think it's going to help out the rate payers in the end. I make a motion to approve the eleven cent increase.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome. Next, we're going to talk about the sewer rate.
Yep.
So the sewer rate, what was happening over the past five years, we were able to increase the amount we're adding into the surplus. So we did not really increase the rate, actually, we didn't increase it at all since two thousand twenty. So now when I look at the analysis, what we, again, what we're going to spend next year, what we expect our income to be based on what we expect to sell and buy from New Bedford, we're coming up with the fact that we have a negative sixteen thousand, so we obviously have to increase the rate for sewer this year. When I did the forty percent increase, it only adds six thousand nine hundred and seventeen, and I feel comfortable with that number. The increase of fifty cents, it's only twelve thousand eight eighteen. I feel a little more comfortable with that, and I'd rather not go much higher than the fifty cents, but I do think going forward, instead of having to do a large increase, like we did a dollar back in two thousand twenty, I'd rather not do that. So fifty cents, I think is a good minimum to do this year, but then every year we should be doing it, if they're consistent with whatever New Bedford's doing, or close, like, look at it and do an analysis, but if they're, they're going to increase it, we want to increase it at least half or more than what they are.
Sure.
So I'm recommending fifty cents, I'm sorry.
So if you look, the surplus is in that great, Mr. Chairman, even on that, but it's, it's fine because, again, we have a good reserve built up, right? It's not like we don't have a good percentage built up for unforeseen and emergency uses, right? Um, in the last five years, we're based on four years from, including this year's, a five years. We're up 5% on sewer rate. The city of New Bedford's up 35%. So obviously, we're doing something right, and trying to manage that account as best we can. Um, but again, the city of New Bedford, up 35%, we're up 5% in the last five years. So.
Can't really ask for much better than that.
And that's, that's an even 50 cents, all tiers.
Correct.
So sewers, where we really need to dial in on, because sewers, water's cheap, right? Sewer gets expensive, depending on how much water you're using in a household. So that's really where I, we need to focus our time and energy is looking at sewer uses. We have roughly 980 now, sewer uses. So, you know, it's either we can expand somehow. If we could do it cheap enough, expand sewer, right? Cause the more users you have, the more dilution you have to the fixed costs, right? So that's something that we're also looking at and having a conversation. We did the CWMP back in, when we finalized that? 18, 19 or something?
Yeah.
Somewhere around 18 or 19. We, I've identified certain areas, just everything's so damn expensive right now. I mean, you can't go and ask somebody, hey, give me $30,000 so I can plug sewer by your house, right? It's just, that's not affordable to anybody. Quite honestly, I wouldn't do it.
No.
Right?
Correct.
So there's a bunch of things that we need to look at as far as infrastructure goes, and how we do business in the town, right? But we're doing the best that, that we can. And I think that we've done a pretty damn good job over the last decade that we've been managing the department, so.
And I believe Kathy's always been a straight shooter, so if she says something's needed, I, I have a tendency to agree.
She, she figures it out pretty close every year that I sit with her, right?
Yep.
Um, she's always got it pretty well dialed in, right? It's never, we're never, we're never shot, but we're never like, you know, screaming on the opposite direction and going, oh, we screwed that up, right? We hurt everybody, right? She's got it dialed in pretty well, so. And it's a moving target anyway, right?
Correct.
It's the water, the pay to the city of New Bedford, that's, that's just the guestment, right? That's all we can do, right? I mean, depending on the season of what's going on, this year is a dry season, people might use more water. Next year is a wet season, people use less, but it's, that, it's always fluctuating, so. And it can fluctuate pretty dramatically, too, so. Given all the variables, we've done a pretty good job managing.
Agreed.
To keep things pretty close and in check. We definitely can't be under budgeted, right?
No.
D O R will say, uh-uh. So I've warned Kathy and Dan of that. It's not like the old days, the, the old BBW used to say, we have surplus, let's use that to lower the rate, right? They pull 50 grand and artificially lower the rate. That was allowed a decade, two decades ago. I was just telling Kathy and Dan when I was in there last week with them, I said, that's not allowed on a D O R anymore. You don't make your budget, we're in trouble. So you have to have something built there.
Yep. All right. Is there a motion to go with option two, a 50% increase on all tiers?
50 cent increase.
50 cent increase.
50 cent. I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good catch.
Next, we have the sewer connection fee. So the bylaw was changed, um, by the select board, um, to include a sewer connection fee. We have, we, we have betterment fees that are, there are no betterment fees out there, but the town is paying off the loans, and the people are still paying off their betterments. When we did the sewer extensions, we had two. One has been fully paid off, one phase, the other phase has not. The other phase will be paid off in 2027, okay? So anybody who's tying into sewer, meaning tying in if their line is down the street, but they broke apart their property and they added a house. So now they wanna add into the, add the sewer line in. They, if they are in the area that has a betterment right now, they are going to be hit with what's called a privilege fee, which is 90% of the cost of the betterment, anywhere from 12 to 14,000 dollars. If they are in the section that was already paid off, they're not getting charged to anything, except the $675 permit fee that we have. So to make it fair to everybody going forward, especially in 2027 when everything is paid off, most towns have what they call a sewer connection fee. So you have to pay to connect to the sewer. And that's, and that, so if you're in the area right now that has the privilege fee, by law, you still have to have the privilege fee until that's paid off. But all the other, the rest of the town will now have a sewer connection fee if you vote this into me. So that everybody will pay something to connect, not, it was very unfair.
Yeah.
So I came up with a $6,000 figure based on generally the, the privilege fees right now, about 12, 5. So in looking at some of the other towns, I gave you a, a few examples. I felt like $6,000, it was like half of the privilege fee right now. That seemed fair to me. That being said, we usually have between 10 and 12 properties that tie into sewer every year. Either new houses built, they put in a, a new street, and they're tying in sewer down the whole street. So we usually have 10 to 12.
Just, just to clarify, too, cause I remember I was a member of the board when we did this, we talked about this. This alleviates some of the issues where, you know, like you had mentioned, a resident splits their property up. They're paying betterments on each one of those.
Correct.
So, yes, pay the betterment for one, but remaining are just connection fees.
Correct.
Whereas, like you said, then there was others that were.
Nothing.
Almost nothing, so.
Right.
Yeah. This is a good idea. I think it's a fair price.
It's the whole, the whole purpose of me working with Kathy and Dan and David Garretowski, to change the sewer bylaw was for this purpose in general, right? Cause there was an individual on Mudlow Street that inherited a house. That individual paid $30,000 to get the pipe in a, in a pump up to go up the road a little bit and tie into the side of New Bedford. They paid $30,000 for that project. The two neighbors across the street walked across, said, how much for me to get into that pipe and contract? They said, oh, let me, let me find out, 675 bucks, right? I don't think that's very fair. Then we had another contractor on this side that tapped in. He paid the 90%, the 12,000 and change to tap into that betterment, which that's what the old bylaw read. Drove the pipe up the street, call it 100 feet, hooked to the right by another couple hundred feet, built three houses. He paid that same $12,000 and change betterment, right? So that individual basically paid $50,000 to tie in, which I think is unfair, too, right? You pay once to tie in to the original betterment, once you run that pipe up, now it's $6,000 per house, right? It's no longer that 12 and change. So that person paid for the infrastructure and labor to run that sewer up, and then we benefited off that privilege fee, 12 grand, 12, 5 for each one of those houses. That's paid an extra $36,000 for something that, that end of that contract, they'll put the pipe in.
Yep.
Right? So it's all about balance and fairness is what I tried to achieve with Dan and Kathy and David Garretowski. And I think Jamie helped me out a little bit with David on that bylaw as well. And that's, we looked up and we found we could do a connection fee, and that's the fairest way across the board to do it. Um, and it's, and it's good for, again, the rate users, right? So I make a motion to approve the $6,000 as recommended connection fee.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Your turn, Dan.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dan, how are you?
Good. Um, I don't know if you guys all got the pamphlet? You did, okay? Um, just, I'm kinda looking for something that, you know, we've had problems in the years past. Um, just shutting down mains so we can, you know, fix them, cause it breaks. And, you know, where this infrastructure is very old, especially in this section, is over 100 years. Um, shutting down the gates is, is a real issue. By putting these inserter valves in, you know, strategic places, we'd be able to isolate it so I can shut it down, and be less houses being shut down, and I can repair it faster. So the people's water wouldn't be off as well. Um, you know, we just had one last night, I was able to shut the water off. Within two hours, I had it done, fixed, and people back on water. Um, some of these over here, it takes you two hours just to shut the water down, plus, you know what I mean? So it turns into a lot longer process to people out of water. I mean, I don't see this, you know, it's gonna be nice when Slocum gets done, cause we're gonna have a lot of new shut offs over there, we'll shut off some of that area. But on the other end, we're gonna kinda need, so that's, I think I'm gonna concentrate on this area first. Um, the problem is the cost of the, these things, cheap. Uh, we do the excavation, and, um, I was talking with, um, John Holley is the company that does these things. And he said, um, for every inch of pipe is roughly what they charge for these valves. So a six-inch pipe would be 6,000, an eight-inch pipe would be 8,000, someone, someone. And that's the rough estimate number for putting these valves in. So I'm kinda proposing to see if I can get at least to do, you know, either two, you know, two or four a year or something, at least a couple a year. Will we get, you know, all this old pipe, at least I can concentrate, at least two a year would be nice. I can isolate one section this year, maybe next year, put another couple in, type of thing. So we have something to be able to shut down the water.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Gasper, yes.
So obviously, you know, I've been working closely with DBW for a long time, and we talked about, I talked about it a long time ago, years ago, about the 43,000 feet of 100-year-old water pipe in this town, right? And it's very expensive, as we learned when we started studying Slocum Street project, how expensive it is to replace that water pipe, right? And plus, tapping to everybody's houses. I'm not happy, you know, putting Band-Aids on things, but I, I think this is something that we have to at least look into and entertain. Um, because I've been out with Mr. Manad and the crews with water main breaks, and it's extremely disturbing how much panic we actually go into with the crew to try to find gate valves when you have a water main break, and how long we're shutting down, and how many residents we have to shut down. Because by the time we find a gate valve that's gonna work, we, you know, we're 300 homes away from where the actual water main is, right? So, um, I think what Dan's trying to do is, he's essentially, what he's trying to do is, there's a lot of these things that are gonna be necessary, they're very expensive, so I wouldn't be looking to do a ton of them every year. But I think, like he says, focus on this one little area over here, where we know we're doing Slocum Street, maybe look at Main Street, he knows the flow, he's got the charts and all that stuff, get a plan, identify where the gate valves aren't working. That's obviously where he's gonna go with them, so that we can shut down segments of neighborhoods instead of whole neighborhoods, right?
Yeah.
That's the idea, right, Dan?
Sure.
So he knows, he's got a mapping system, him and Cam Balo that works in the water and sewer department, he does a great job. He's got his own little sketches that he does. He's, he knows what gate valves aren't working and which ones are surfisable, right? So based on that, we'll make a map, we'll identify certain areas. That's where I think Dan's going, is he wants to be able to say, okay, these don't work. Like, these work, I don't have to worry about that. These don't work in any, but I need to go pull one or two over there and be able to shut down that segment of neighborhood. I think it's, you know, I don't know anything about this pump, this is the first time I've read on it. Um, it seems pretty cool, the way it works. The, the, I know we need to do something to shut down water. Instead of killing 400 homes, we can just knock off 100 homes, whatever that number may be, right? Isolate the problem to a small area, right? Um, I just don't know, it looks, it looks a little bit convoluted. And once this pump is, this gate valve, this insertion valve is put inside the pipe, it's pretty cool, cause it can be put on with the water flow still going, right? Just taps itself into the hole.
Yep.
The problem is, is there's gotta be some kind of a sleeve that would go over this and bolt up, or I don't know how it's gonna rest, I wouldn't want it to rest on the existing water pipe, cause it's so, I wouldn't want a car driving over and putting that pressure down the pipe. So there's gotta be something that protects this and sleeves up to the top of the street, right? Like the gate valves are.
No, gate valves aren't, you're just sitting right on top of the gate valves. Yeah, there's nothing that really holds, but the box, the gate box itself does not sit. So it's able to move, it won't press down other than, cause it's, the box is, it's, uh, a pipe inside of a pipe, is how the gate boxes work. So it's made in two pieces, so the bottom half stays two feet, then the top part will be three feet tall. So it slides inside the other one, so.
How does this stay, how does this stay clean and free and clear of dirt and debris when you backfill a trench?
It's a gate box that goes over this, it's a gate box.
Right, that's what I'm trying to ask.
That's when we're gonna be turning the valve on, it's a box that goes over it. But you're not pushing, the box ain't, the total, let's say this is five feet deep, the box ain't five feet, and the box would be split in two. So it's got two pieces, so the top piece.
Yeah, top piece telescopic, it slides in and out.
That won't push down, that won't put pressure down onto the.
The bottom one's stationary on this, the top one floats telescopic, right? Like the one that they put in my yard, the plastic one from the gas company?
Yeah, correct.
Um, I don't know why I was the only one that got a plastic one, but I got a plastic one.
No, they're actually all gas now.
No, they're metal now, he put a metal one in my yard, the gas company. He came, he even said to me, how'd you get a plastic one? I'm like, I don't know, you're the gas company. I wasn't, I didn't put this in my yard, you guys put the new main in. Put a cheap little plastic one, right out of your Lego set in, right? So, and it kept going, every time the lawnmower ran over, it just slides down the hole. I'm like, I think it's gonna go. And they put in a metal one, right, the, the real deal, they had to redig the hole, but, you know, I got the real deal, and it doesn't move up and down anymore like a, like a toy. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, we should sample it, right? Get, probably do two, wherever we need to, where we know we can get a plan, we're gonna do these and isolate neighborhoods, right? Buy two of them.
Yep.
And let, let's see how this works out, right? Before we go spend a ton of money, cause this is expensive, right? I mean, you're talking.
And again, I want, we gotta check and make sure, like you said, I, I've got neighborhoods, the gates are working, Kev, so I wanna make sure we got which ones ain't working, which ones are not, and then we can make that decision.
So do you come back to us with a plan?
Yes, I can do that. Yeah, so I, I wanna go out with Cam, and we're gonna go over it, and we're gonna, cause he's out there actually doing flushing and stuff now. So he knows which ones ain't working and which ones are.
So New Bedford do have these, you know?
Yes.
Other municipalities have these?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. They put them in a lot of towns, different things, where they can't shut down mains, you know? Especially New Bedford, too, they, they got a lot of old, uh, infrastructure as well. We're not the only ones believing that.
Just as, like, this is a way to do co-op buying, if other towns are buying them, can you get cheaper prices?
That's a good, that's a good actually point, um, I can check with him, he might actually know, you know, maybe get them cheaper, you're right. Maybe I'll talk to, um, Jamie Pott from New Bedford and see what they, you know, they might have a company that comes in, and maybe if you get, mix in with that, you get a cheaper price, yeah.
You're making a ton of money.
Definitely a good idea.
We are their customers.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's a real good point, yeah, that's another thing I, I can look into as well.
Good going. Yeah, I think we put together.
I can do that, I'll, I'll check with Cam in the meantime, let's get this together, and then, uh, I'll check with the city as well.
Get a big, get a big map.
Yep.
Identify all of them, right, and how we're gonna do this, so that we already know where we've been, right? And where we haven't been, and just keep knocking it off every year. And if, just wait there, we know where we've been and where we haven't been, right? And you're gonna need that map anyway, cause you're gonna know which ones, the new ones, right? You don't wanna be guessing, and especially with snow.
Yeah.
You have to do something, right? Where is that one now? At least you got a map, right? So many feet off this street, out from the curb that much, and you mock it off, you put it on the map. At least then you, you get isolated pretty quick. I mean, that's the whole thing, where they go around and put the yellow dots and.
Yep.
They just did that, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, right? So people ask me, what are the yellow dots in a street for? And I'm like, so that's when you're snow plowing, you know where the storm basin is.
Well, if it gets, sometimes if you can't, the snow comes out further than basins, you gotta open them up, we gotta know where they are.
So when the plows go by, they look for the yellow dot, and all you do is follow that back to the curb. And you know that's where you have to shovel to get the storm water. Right?
Makes sense. Cool.
All right, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
One more.
One more?
What's one more?
You?
Paving, fair share paving?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you to the board.
Yep.
The state, uh, state has announced, uh, our share of the fair share, which is their terminology. It's the millionaire tax.
Okay.
Uh, it is 177,362. Uh, it's based on two different, uh, determinations. One is the Chapter 90 formula, 78,525. The other is road miles, 98,837. It's a different way of doing business. Uh, they are not looking to have, uh, any reimbursement requests come in. They're looking to have a report filed within 30 days of the expenditure.
Once we ju, once we complete the job. So, what they're saying, they are, they already, we have the money. The town accountant has this money.
Yep.
Uh, we cannot use this money until the board, the select board votes on how we're going to spend this money. I do not need to, usually I need to at that point, once all of you say yes, I go to, um, the state and ask Chapter 90, state and ask chapter ninety, this is what we vote, what we would like to do, here's our proposal, we wait for them to say, okay, we don't have to do that on this one. So, we have the money, we just need the board to vote on where they'd like to spend it. Once we spend it and complete the job, I will submit all the bills of what we paid, so we'll show that we spent the hundred and seventy-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-two, how we spent it, where we spent it, and then say, I think there's a report that the select board will sign saying, yes, we did spend this money, and that we did spend it the correct way. So, it's, it's a little bit easier, and that we don't have to do all the pre approvals and wait for chapter ninety to say, okay, we now have the money, we can make some decisions, we do need to spend this money by June thirtieth of 2025, so we have a little less in a year.
And I would like to put an article on the Fall Town Meeting, it might be built and suspended, but you only have authorized the chapter ninety money in the annual town meeting in one of the articles you do every year. I would like to specifically put an article in for this Fall Town Meeting, and then include it in the annual every year, similar to that chapter ninety article, authorizing the town through the board of selectmen to spend the fair share money.
Okay.
Makes sense to me. Keep it moving.
So, Kathy, you said we have to spend that fair share money by June of 2025?
Yep.
Yes, you received it on July first, well, right around there. We did receive, I've already verified, we have the money in our account now, so we have the money, and yes, we have one year to, to spend it, and obviously, we don't want them to take it back.
And Mr. Chairman, through you, just not specifically for paving, it's for culvert repair, breach repair, it's for anything to do with the transportation system.
So, that window's not a very big window, it sounds like a big window, it's not a big window, right?
No, it's not.
Because paving, it's only going to be done in so many months, right? And, and that's why the window shrinks, right? We don't pave in November, you don't pave in December, you don't pave in January, March, April, May's really when you come out and pave, so you really got May and June. So, I think the board needs to try to calculate, what do we want to use that one seventy-seven project, that money for, right? And then you got to go off a bid.
Correct.
Right? Put it out to bid, so you want to be out to bid February-ish, March is the latest, right? So, you get all the bids back in, you can make the decision on what needs to be done, and you can spend that money, because if you don't act proactive, and you don't do this ninety days early, hundred and twenty days early for bid.
Yeah.
You're done.
Correct.
So.
And if you're going to do culverts or bridges or anything like that, I would say you have to even do the put out to bid two or three months before that.
I'm just, I'm just putting up a red flag for the board to understand that if there's something that they, any, the individuals of the board would like to do, that they need to identify that and have that discussion earlier on, right?
For year one?
I got, I got a question. Could we use it on the projects that we currently have now, so you wouldn't lose the money? We got, we got all these ones that just went out the bid, Earl, and all of them, that money, could we use it kind of for that?
You could.
And then now, you're not, we weren't, we taking any extra of our chapter ninety funds, which that's good for ever, where this is not, you know what I mean? Because I don't think you're going to be able to get any kind of drainage projects or anything done in that timeframe.
We absolutely can supplement it, that one seventy-seven can be supplemented for any road paving, right?
Yep.
So, I was just thinking, saying to the board, if the board had a, you know, that, put it this way, one seventy-seven, basically what you're getting is you're going to pave a half a mile of road.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
That's it, not even, I bet you it's not even.
But I'm saying that would definitely help on them streets that, the ones we get that bid, we're going to six out to bid or eight out, so.
That's what, that's, but if there was something else that, say you had, you know, a quarter mile stretch of road, and the board said, I, you know, this is really bad, let's get this done, right? Then we could do that if the board had that thought, but if not, I, I mean, I already know, and I know, I'm thinking ahead, and I know that we have like Dave, Earl, Joseph and Earl one, right? So, we already know that that is, so we have to supplement some funds towards the EverSource funds, yeah, we can absolutely use that for that, right?
I think that's a good idea.
And, and so the board knows, this is money that will come in every year on the same schedule, because it's part of the whole statute that was passed for the millionaire tax.
Right, until all the millionaires move out of Massachusetts, you don't have a millionaire's tax anymore, just like all the millionaires and billionaires are moving out of California and going to Texas, right? So.
Then it'll be a millionaire tax, you know?
Take it while we can.
They just find a reason to tax you up a little bit more, right?
Cool.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we'll all dig, dig into it, and probably have some conversations over the next couple of days or so.
When the bids come in, too, I think, once the bids come in with what we have out, and we understand what EverSource is going to fund for us, we'll, we can come back to you with what we know is we're going to need is extra.
Yep.
You might want to vote that in, and we can see how much extra we have to spend.
Cool.
Okay.
It's going to be, it's going to, we are going to have a real watch, anyway, because when we put them out the bid, the fixtures in the, in the street, right? So, Dan and I went out, and we did the measurements with, with Keating for the road stuff over there, the last EverSource project, and then they put in the bid spec, I was actually reading through some of it, and we were talking about it, so it's like a thousand, eleven hundred bucks per fixture, structure, right? Fixtures, which is manholes, right? So, I said, well, you're not going to charge me a thousand dollars to do a water gate valve versus a, a stormwater basin, right, that triple the size, and he goes, no, it'll be that, might be four hundred bucks for the, the gate valve, the water gate valve, and it's a thousand for, that's, that price is for the stormwater basins, right? So, we know based on how the bids just came in, and we looked at the bids for the, it's not really a change order, but they didn't bid that out, we know that we're going to be short ten, fifteen thousand dollars to do that project, right? So, there's a little chop off that one seventy-seven, if you say, that seventeen grand becomes one sixty, right? Whatever the other projects that were out to bid, if we need, you know, a hundred grand for both of those, to complete both of those, you're down to sixty grand, right? And we'll figure out what else we need to do.
August nineteenth, I believe, the bid opening, so we'll, we'll know that day.
Yeah, we got both of those bids coming in shortly, so.
All right. Cool.
And that'll be, more than likely, they won't pave, I don't know if they're going to be able to get out there, hopefully they'll figure that out, right? We're, I'm still trying to get to Middle Road and Cory and McDonald, that were done two years ago, for crying out loud, and they was all yelling and screaming and jumping up and down, but.
Well, I, I talked to, so that was like a small window, so we're going to kind of get that done, like, sooner than later, because he said he was, he was trying to, like, the end of this month, actually get and do that project, so, but he said he's busy way before, and he's busy after, so it's like the last week of August, he's trying to get that in and done, so, I got to kind of get back to him, and we got to just move on that one as well, so.
All we got to do is.
I did look at the paperwork over there.
Yeah, I'll talk to you tomorrow about the paperwork, because I had some questions with Kathy on the paperwork, and I said to be fair, Dan, you really look at that with us and have that discussion, but it'll, it's all been pre-approved by the board, I'm just talking about those fixtures, right?
Yeah.
You got to reset fixtures, you can't leave them below the surface, right?
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Bye, Cindy, I'll get you.
All right. Mr. Kelly, old business, we're going to pass over, you said?
Yeah.
Selectmen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to remind everybody that August Thursday, August twenty-ninth, at five P M, the cruise night starts here, we will be putting that on again this year, the classic cruise night, it's a great thing that we do in the town, center of town, a lot of people have a lot of fun, so come on out and enjoy some, some classic cars and some classic music with everybody, and great food and beverages from our local businesses.
Nice.
Mr. Warner?
I'm good.
All right, and I'd like to remind everybody out there that next Friday, on August sixteenth, the Acusnet Police Department is having a softball game against the Acusnet Fire Department. Last year, they did it, it was pretty fun, this year, they're cooking burgers and dogs, and they're selling some fundraising T-shirts, and should be pretty good.
What time is that, Mr. Chairman?
I believe it was seven, seven P M, six P M? I'll, I'll confirm with the fire chief and verify.
Show up at six and wait till seven.
Eat burgers and dogs.
I'll be there helping cook him, so I'll, I'll serve some burgers early.
Whoa.
Great. All right. There's our motion, Mr. Chairman.
So, move.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.